May I call this meeting to order? Village Council, regular council meeting, November the 25th, 2014. We have a moment of prayer, a moment of silence.
Sure.
Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you. There's so much to thank you for, and we just ask for wisdom that you would guide us, help us to make the best decisions for the residents and those that are involved with Green Hills, and we look forward to what you're going to do in this community. And Jesus has made my prayer.
Amen.
Amen.
Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll call the roll.
Brokaw.
Here.
Dries.
Here.
Halter.
Here.
Hermes.
Here.
Lee. Walther. Moore.
Here.
And council members Lee and Walther are not present due to conflicts and therefore, without objection, are excused.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to amend the agenda. To add a resolution for the sale of property.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of October 28th, regular council meeting, the November 11th, 2014 work session, the minutes of the February 12th, 2012, February 9th, 2013, February 8th, 2014 council retreats. Someone is correcting an error that we made. We never actually approved the minutes of those prior three council retreats. Instead of doing so tonight, we will make them official.
Any corrections? The minutes? Hearing none. Minutes stand approved. This is the time for citizens to comment on matters before council or to ask questions of concern to them. When recognized, please come forward to the lectern, give your name and address, and state your comments or questions. Council meetings are tape-recorded for ease of transcriptions. Comments are limited to two minutes. Anybody?
Just a quick thing to say with yesterday's power outage that we had yesterday morning and one day last week. On my way into work, I was wanting to know if you guys can get the word out to let the citizens, residents, to know that when lights were out, it's a four-way stop. Had a hard time getting off and over to Witten because people just keep driving through. School buses, you know, I just want to know if you can get the word out to other communities to let people know. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Thanks. No one else? Reports of village officials. Municipal manager, Yvonne Kovak.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a couple of items tonight. First of all, it's a personnel issue. Currently, we have our holidays for Christmas, our Christmas Eve and Christmas Day. Christmas falling on a Thursday, we would like to move that to Christmas Day and the day after Christmas. And I think Mr. Forbes suggested that maybe by motion, if you would find that acceptable. This, of course, only applies to really the office personnel. Police department, of course, would be here, also service. So rather than being off the day before Christmas, they'd be off the day after Christmas.
So moved.
Thank you.
Do we have to say yes?
Second.
Third. I say no.
Motion carries.
Okay, great. Thank you. Also have, in addition to the one sale that Mr. Halter already added to the agenda, I did receive another offer yesterday for one of our properties. It's only been on the market for a couple of weeks. It's a very good offer. This is for 49 Burley Circle, and it is pretty straightforward, and I can go through it at the time or I can go through it now to let you know the details of it. But if you would prefer to go into executive session, we can do that as well.
I'd like to go into executive session.
Great. Great. Then we'll hold that for this, at this point.
Do we amend the agenda?
Your turn.
Do we need to amend the agenda then for that? Okay.
Do we need to go to executive session for it?
That's your choice, council's choice.
Would you rather do that?
I'd rather do that.
Okay.
Because we have concerns and I don't want to negotiate with the potential buyer on TV.
Okay. No.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we amend the agenda to include an executive session to discuss the sale and purchase of real estate.
Would that be after the calendar?
After the calendar. We would put that yes. And I would, there's no intent for action tonight.
Yes, there is.
Oh, there is intent for action.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Okay.
I'll second that. All those in favor, motion to add to the agenda?
Aye.
Okay.
Motion carries.
One more thing I would like to mention, because I intend to have the contract for the golf course at the next session for passage, and I did want to let council know that Matt Sanders and I have been working with Joel Suggs to work up a contract. It's similar to last year's, although what we will be doing this year, it's the same dollar amount, but from there, we will be subtracting the expenses associated with the golf course. He's agreeable to that, and just wanted to let you know that would be coming as well, along with the swim safe. I think I mentioned that at the last meeting, that we would have a swim safe renewal on, at that December meeting, too.
What kind of money did we put out for maintenance for the golf course this past year?
It was roughly $8,000. In addition to the contract, about $8,000.
Okay, so he'll absorb that with the same contract.
Yes.
Good.
And that's all I have right now. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
I know we had an early snow already, and I know that salt is incredibly expensive this year, paying almost twice what we did last year. Did we use any salt?
Almost three times.
Yeah, almost three times.
Almost three times, wow. Did we use any salt this past storm?
We did, sparingly.
Okay. Yeah, okay. I want to make sure our motoring public is safe, but...
Absolutely.
How many tons we used?
Yeah, we have actually had two, because we were called out for black ice.
On Saturday morning.
That was this past weekend, yeah.
Maybe people have to start buying chains for their cars.
Steel dressing way. I remember that.
It should be required in some states by law.
Okay, moving on. Law director, Mr. Forbes.
Thank you. No report tonight?
Okay. Questions, comments? Hearing none. Clerk of council, Catherine Lyes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The November 2014 community calendar and ordinance number 2014-11F and resolution numbers 2014-34RC, 35F, 36F, and 37F, and notice of the rescheduled recreation commission meeting of November 12th, 2014, were all posted as required. And if there are any questions, that would conclude my report.
Questions? Hearing none. Chief of police, Neil Furman.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. This morning, we concluded an interview of a last police applicant. We do have one vacancy in our part-time ranks. We are holding off on filling that pending completion of the 2015 budget. We did have some bad luck with a cruiser recently with a cracked engine block, and I'm pleased to report that one of our new cruisers went into service finally today after outfitting, and the second should follow within the next few days. We're hopeful. The last cruiser was somewhat unexpected, and Matt Sanders, our finance director, and our municipal manager, Yvonne Kovak, thanks go to them for recognizing that need, making the funds available, and ultimately to council who approved it. So we thank you very much. We're not very effective if we can't get from point A to point B, so that helps us tremendously. We do have the last digital camera that will be going into the remaining Ford Crown Victoria Cruiser. We couldn't get it over to Mobile Comm because of our shortage of cruisers, and we hope to get that completed within the next week. Fire chief, Tony Spath, and I recently met with the director of the Hamilton County Communication Center. We looked at our dispatch costs, which are pretty significant for our budget, but it looks as if those could decrease unless the county commission approves a 5% increase, and if that's the case, because that's averaged on the calls for the past year, and our call load went down just a bit, the rates will only go up by about $466. The military does make surplus equipment available to police departments. It's not necessarily what you see on TV in just armored carriers. It also includes, of all things, office chairs. And we were able to secure 20 chairs. The law director, the clerk of council, and myself are sitting in three of the new chairs.
Are they camouflage?
They're not quite. And actually, our municipal manager artfully assigned all of those, and we have matching chairs here and then across the hall in the caucus room, so you will find your caucus meetings a bit more enjoyable in the future. We met recently with the director of the Alzheimer's Center about the Run for the Good, Councilman Halter, and Ms. Kovak participated in that, and we reviewed the last run and also made some plans for next year's. One area of concern, we wanted to make sure that anyone that might be watching us is aware of. Last Friday, we had a resident in our I section that reported that she answered the door. She found a tall, slender, slender white male, very, very dark hair, and he asked for help with his towing bill. He told her his truck was broke down, he needed a few extra dollars to cover the bill. He showed her a flyer of his landscaping business saying he was just a good guy that needed some help. He actually made entry into the woman's home by telling her that she dropped some money, and he ultimately left with $30 of her money. She quickly went to the windows, she saw neither him nor any truck in sight. And we did also get a second report of the exact same method that he used in a nearby residence. So we ask any of our residents who would be approached by such an individual, please contact us right away, and we've kept a lookout for him. We also put on our website recently some checklists that would be very helpful for someone that plans a trip either this Thanksgiving or during the holiday season. Unfortunately, that is often a season for burglars and thefts from vehicles, so we'd urge anyone that hasn't taken a look at that to review that. During the past month of October, we investigated seven accidents, eight crimes, 166 other incidents. We made 841 contacts with our residents, and 208 of those were dispatched, and 633 were self-initiated by our police officers. We provided assistance to the public in 94 instances, assisted other agencies 57 times. We made 27 criminal arrests and 56 traffic arrests. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
If I could jump in for a second. I wanted to thank, again, Officer Ann Ward and all those that helped with the race. Just, I know I mentioned it before, I don't know if it was at the work session, but it was a challenge when we found out that there was a soccer tournament happening close by, and everybody hung in there and just did a great job. We learned some things whenever you do something new like that, and we're going to probably have the run earlier in the day, which was an original suggestion, but I think it's all going to be a continuous good event for the community, and I really appreciate your guys' help and support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. Have any report for the fire chief? All right, and I have audit and court receipts. State of Ohio received $1,837.25. This is for the month of October. The treasurer of Hamilton County received $63.75. The village of Green Hills, $8,179, for a total of $10,080. Also, I just wanted to mention that I'd received a thank you card from a resident in Green Hills here thanking myself and council for the proclamation for November pancreatic cancer month in the village of Green Hills.
It's easy to say.
I know, I know. It's a tongue twister for me. Okay. Anybody has any questions of me? If not, we'll move on.
I got a page for.
Yeah, okay. All right. Traffic and Safety Committee report. Council member Brokaw.
We met today, and the old business we discussed were the cruisers, which the chief has mentioned, and then the new business was the interviewing of part-time candidates, which also was mentioned by the chief. We talked about, we plan on canceling the meeting for December because it is Tuesday, December 23rd. Just with vacation schedules, it just doesn't seem like it would be effective. And then going on, in 2015, we're going to move the traffic and safety meetings to the fourth Monday of the month at 4:30.
Okay. Finance and audit, council member Dries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We canceled our meeting today, but that doesn't mean that there wasn't finance and audit work going on. I've been working with the finance director and the manager. We will have a temporary appropriation in December, and then the permanent appropriation in January, and Matt is working on that. I will have, I want to make sure I get this right, I have two ordinances and a resolution this evening. I did want to bring council up to date for 2015. We're tracking pretty well for budget on '14. As all of you are aware, we have the general fund, and then we have several special funds, such as streets and roads and recreation and police operating, et cetera. In that general fund, we started the year with a balance of $1,320,000. We're projecting an end-of-the-year balance of $954,000. And a big reason for the reduction, as we know, we've got some debt payments to make. In 2015, we will have less of a transfer and maybe no transfer at all to the non-voted debt service fund, and the reason for that is, is that we've sold properties in 2014. We put it into that fund, so we will have money to do that. Those are both good things in the eyes of the Finance and Audit Committee. The concern is 2016 and 2017, where we will have to transfer funds out. So I suspect, our goal is to be very mindful of our expenditures in 2015. We'll continue to work more on this. We'll talk about it through retreat, and we'll probably talk about it all of 2015. That's just the reality of what we live in. I have pushed both the manager and the finance director with questions about potential savings on the expense side, potential additional revenue places. We'll continue to work on that, and we will keep everybody apprised. And that's my report for today.
Questions, comments? Moving on. Recreation cable TV, council member Hermes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Of course, you know that on the 12th of October, we did have our recreation commission meeting. They did talk about getting the locations of the walking pathways numbered. The opening for those walkways will be right around March, April at the latest. We also have some, the recreation commission's bringing up to us some recommendations as far as for the pioneer days, like having it the week before, something simpler, not as dramatic, but still having the run, still having the parade. So the recommendations will be brought to us probably here next month. Also, we're also going to get some information out to the people around Burley Circle, just to kind of get some feedback from them as far as we're looking at doing something for Burley Park. One of the things we did talk about, and I did talk to Yvonne about this, as far as putting a new sidewalks around, because it's really messed up. It's a lot of different sidewalks. Some asphalt, and some dirt, some concrete, it's all broken up. So we're looking into that as far as maybe some cost and that type of thing. Also, they had, recreation had some ideas as far as putting up some door hangers around the area for the village people. Village people, that sounded good, didn't it? And then just kind of give them the calendar of events and what's going to be happening for 2015, and also possibly putting in some coupons in for the pool, the golf course, the other things that we could probably think of. Just let people know what's happening. So I think it'd be a good idea. Also, in talking to Chip Burquist from the Waycross, having a replacement for the CPB board, there was, you know, several people had applied for it. One of the things in talking to Chip, he had mentioned the one gentleman that he would like to have, and I'm bringing it to you guys just to let you know. His name is Jonathan Palmer. He lives over on Julup. He's been there for, I guess, about 14 years now. Basically, he's been a volunteer for them, the Waycross, since 2001. He graduated from Witten Woods in 2005. He was a graduate of a high university in radio and television. He's been an engineer at WOWT since 2011, early 2011, so almost four years. Chip feels he's a perfect fit. He just knows about, you know, what goes on. And I guess he said, "Just being involved with all aspects of TV production through my life, aware of the challenges of television organization, the organization faces, he's knowledgeable in the trends of the industry and technical skill." Chip's pretty excited if he could be a part of it, with your blessing.
At the proper time or later, make a motion, or do you want to do it now?
I can do it now? Yeah, I'd like to make a motion for having Jonathan Palmer be a part of the CPB board.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Jonathan Palmer's it. Okay. Is that it? Any questions?
That's due.
All right. And does anybody have anything to report for intergovernmental affairs or service and streets? Mr. Lee and Mr. Walther are here. Hearing none. Community development, council member Halter.
Yeah, the only thing I guess I'd like to bring up at this juncture is, I love Green Hills Dinner and Dance. We've had it for two years. As we look at budgets, you know, that's one issue. I think I've headed up a fair amount of events, and I'm not sure with my schedule right now I can head this one up, but there's a possibility that this event might not happen, and I'm, you know, I welcome feedback. I know that there's often some very vocal people that, you know, vocal in the positive way, saying, "Wow, I really love that event," but we also need people to step up and volunteer, and we have to look at it in the scale of all the other things that we spend money on. So, and not only, since it's getting towards the tail end of the year, it's also a good idea to let us know which events, you know, the community feels they really enjoyed, and, you know, and speak up, and in some cases, step up to help that out. And there are people that have stepped up, so I don't want to take away from them, but we're going to be relooking at our schedule for the upcoming year, and just want to have some feedback if it's out there. Thank you.
You know, just a little feedback for you. I know that in the very beginning, when you first came on to council, you were graciously given the opportunity to take care of the 75th.
Is that hazing?
Yeah, exactly. It was serious hazing. And, you know, what you accomplished for that course of the year was awesome, and I think that dinner was a part of what you wanted to do in the very beginning of the year, and then at the end of the year, just the full circle. So to think it would continue on, I think wouldn't be appropriate to think that way because there was a lot of work that you did during the course of that year and still do, so I think it was awesome the way this too, during this, turned out. There was a purpose for it.
And also, keep in mind, it doesn't mean that we can't revisit some of these later, too, if the resources are there and that kind of thing, so.
Yeah.
Good. Thank you.
Do it for the 80th anniversary.
There you go.
Every five years.
I like that.
I'm game.
Moving on to unfinished business. We have an ordinance.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is second reading of ordinance 2014-12F, and ordinance amending Chapter 199, Income Tax of the Village of Green Hills Codified Ordinance, whereas the Village of Green Hills desires to add a definition of pension to Chapter 191 of the Village of Green Hills Codified Ordinances, and whereas the regional income tax is recommending this definition be added to the code, now therefore be it ordained by the council of the Village of Green Hills, State of Ohio. Section 1, that, Section 191.02 shall be amended to include the following definition: Pension. For the purpose of this chapter, a pension is any amount paid to an employee or former employee that is reported to the receipt on an IRS, to the recipient on an IRS Form 1099R or successor form. Pension does not include deferred compensation or amounts attributable to non-qualified deferred compensation plans, as reported as FICA Medicare wages on IRS Form W2, Wage and Tax Statement or successor form, Section 2. This ordinance shall be in full force and take effect from and after the earliest period allowed by law. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this ordinance.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass ordinance number 2014-12-F. Any discussion?
Yeah.
It's probably a little bit misunderstood in the Green Hills Journal.
Yeah, and let me give some color to that. Hold on just a second.
Color? Color commentary?
Yes. We're all kind of wearing black, aren't we? It's kind of cool.
And...
I didn't get the memo.
Sorry. Yeah, there was an article in the Green Hills Journal. The Green Hills Journal does a great job of reporting on various topics, including governmental things, but I think in this instance, the article needs a little clarification. The village is not adding pensions to the list of items to be taxed. A definition of pension is being added to our tax code. The necessity for the addition of the definition is the result of recent court cases in the state of Ohio regarding a rare type of compensation plan entitled Supplemental Executive Retirement Plan, or SERP, which per the Internal Revenue Service is a non-qualified deferred compensation plan in which the local tax codes did not define pension adequately to make it clear whether these types of plans are taxed or not taxed. Currently, Section 191.03E of the Green Hills Income Tax Code outlines the exceptions to taxing, and this section of the code is not being changed. Included in the exceptions are welfare benefits, unemployment insurance benefits, pensions, social security benefits, and qualified retirement plans as defined by the Internal Revenue Service. That was not a Freudian slip. It's internal, not eternal, Revenue Service. And a list of 17 other categories that are not taxed. Non-qualified deferred compensation plans are not currently listed in Green Hills, exceptions, and are taxed. The addition of this definition clarifies the status of our tax code as it regards non-qualified deferred compensation plan. Once again, we are not changing what is being taxed in Green Hills. This is the addition of a clarifying definition only to Section 191.02 of the tax code. So we're not adding any new taxes. We're just clarifying what is and what is not taxed. And this supplemental executive retirement plan, oftentimes it's extended to executives that are making pretty significant incomes of $20,080. that are making pretty significant incomes of $200,000, $250,000, and up, so.
Jump change.
Is the Journal going to clarify that for people? I know that some people don't get to watch the...
We corresponded with the Journal to let them know what we were, because we had, when that came out, we had some calls into the office where people were concerned that their pension was being taxed, and so we...
And to be clear, it's because of the title of that section. I mean, it said, "Council considers, you know, what pension taxation or something."
Adding pensions or something.
Adding pensions to tax.
Right. I mean, that's not a little, that's sending a message that's inaccurate. And I just wondered if it would be nice, even if we put something in the Green Hills Journal to clarify that in case somebody doesn't watch this, you know, council meeting. Because people should be putting...
We've had correspondence with them. I mean, I can't, we don't speak for them as to what they put in and don't put in.
No, but we can write a letter to the editor or something, right?
I believe they have this exact text.
They do.
I suspect we'll see something, but I don't want to speak for them.
Probably being refreshed.
If we don't see it, I just think that it would be good for us to put it in the Journal in one shape or another.
And we do have it on the website, too.
Right. Again, though, the community that looks at the Journal is maybe not at the...
Probably the biggest source of information to our community, and we're grateful for it.
Thank you for hearing me out.
Anybody else? Questions?
Call for the vote. Roll call.
Roll call.
Aye.
Dries.
Aye.
Halter.
Aye.
Hermes.
Aye.
The ordinance number 2014-12-F, ordinance amending Chapter 191, Income Tax of the Village of Green Hills Codified Ordinances, passes. Another...
You know what, I was really going to do, give you guys a rough time and say no.
You can't.
Please do not, or it won't pass. Because I know she changes the thing you're going to ask her.
Well, with four of us here now.
Next item is ordinance 2014-13-F, ordinance making supplemental appropriation, be it ordained by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, State of Ohio, that Section 1, certain increases are needed in the monies appropriated so as to permit the Village of Green Hills to meet its fiscal obligations for the year 2014. The following items of expenditure are added or amended to, for current expenses and other expenses for the year of 2014. The funds are to be reallocated, appropriated from unappropriated funds due to the income of the village being greater than the amounts anticipated, and from funds not appropriated at the beginning of the year, or are to be reduced to reflect the realized revenues. Section 2, appropriations are to be amended as follows. Current appropriation, $34,024 for the capital outlay police fund. The change is an increase of $23,988 for a revised total of $58,012. And I move for the passage of this ordinance.
I second it. Okay, is the second reading?
It's an ordinance.
Supplemental appropriations.
So...
Well, it's an ordinance, which means it takes two readings, but it's an appropriation, so it goes into effect immediately.
Can I suspend the rule with four people?
No.
I tried to look that up right before, and I don't have that most recent charter amendment.
It takes four to suspend an ordinance.
Five for an emergency. That's right, yes.
Okay, so I...
We can suspend the rule if required.
Thank you for the clarification. So, Mr. Mayor, at this time, I'd like to suspend the rule, reading the ordinance two times on two separate occasions.
Do a second.
I second it.
All those in favor of suspending reading the ordinance 2014-13-F two times, say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of ordinance 2014-13-F.
Any comments?
This is to buy the police cruiser.
Oh, so that's what Section 1 was saying, because that's, Section 1 was really twisting my brain.
Yes, Section 2 is where the highlights are. We need $23,988.
When you relocate and appropriate non-appropriate funds and do the income and appropriate this with anticipated funds coming, oh my God.
All right.
It's mind-boggling.
And we did have a second on that, didn't we? Did you? I second it.
Sorry, Dave.
Roll call.
Dries.
Aye.
Halter.
Aye.
Hermes.
Aye.
Roll call.
Aye.
Okay, ordinance number 2014-13-F, ordinance making supplemental appropriation, passes. We have another one.
Resolution 2014-38-F, adopting an annual fee schedule for the Village of Green Hills. Whereas the Village has determined that it is necessary to assess certain fees for services, and now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Village of Green Hills. Section 1, that the Council of the Village of Green Hills hereby adopts the fee schedule set forth in Exhibit A attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference. Section 2, that this resolution shall be in full force and take effect upon the passage of the resolution. So this is for 2014. This is...
Concept tip.
I'm sorry, it's for 2015, for our fee schedule. We worked on this in executive, or in work session, so this is the first reading.
It's a resolution. So we can pass it.
It only gets one. Resolution...
So it's for passage.
And four votes will carry?
Yes, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Do we need a second?
A second.
I second.
If you'd like, Mr. Mayor, I'll point out the changes. There are not many changes. There is an addition of a $10 late charge for apartment rent that is late. There's an addition of a $5 per day late charge for garages that are late payments. There are no changes to the swimming pool rates for residents, for non-residents. It's moving from 225 to 250 for up to five people in a family, then a $10 per person for additional family members.
Removing the preseason rate for non-residents, the 250 is the season rate. So it's just getting rid of the 225 preseason.
I still corrected.
And then it's limiting the people to five in a family.
Or paying $10 additional. The same thing goes for the single non-resident, it's 120. For seniors 65 and over, the non-resident rate will be 90. There were some slight changes to the golf course rates, just to round them to even numbers. And I believe that is the, those are the sum and substance of the highlights of the fee schedule.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, roll call. Vote on ordinance, Resolution 2014-38-F, adopting the annual fee schedule for the Village of Green Hills.
Halter.
Aye.
Hermes.
Aye.
Roll call.
Aye.
Dries. Aye.
Resolution 2014-38-F passes. All right, we have another one?
That's it. Well, we do have some.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I have Resolution Number 2014-39-CND, authorizing the municipal manager to enter into a contract for purchase and sale of real estate located at 9 Chalmers Lane. Whereas the municipal manager has been presented with an offer to purchase the property located at 9 Chalmers Lane, and whereas Council of the Village of Green Hills desires to authorize said sale and purchase. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio. Section 1, that the municipal manager is hereby authorized to enter into a contract for the purchase and sale of property located at 9 Chalmers Lane to Francis, substantially in the form of the contract attached herein to as Exhibit A incorporated herein by reference. Section 2, that the municipal manager is further authorized to execute any and all necessary documents to fulfill the sale of said property. Section 3, that the finance director is hereby directed to deposit the sale of proceeds into the non-voted debt fund. Section 4, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage. I move to adopt.
Second. Any discussion? Do you want to give a recap?
Sure.
Color commentary?
Okay. This, again, is for 9 Chalmers, and it's being sold to the same individual who had purchased 5 Chalmers. And she has since done the updates to that and rented that one. We have a tenant in this one, so it is an investment piece of property that tenant is staying. She's happy to have them. That's the story.
Okay, cool. All right. Okay, roll call, vote on Resolution 2014-39-CD, authorizing the municipal manager to enter into a contract for the purchase and sale of real estate located at 9 Chalmers Lane.
Hermes.
Aye.
Roll call.
Aye.
Dries.
Aye.
Halter.
Aye.
Resolution Number 2014-39-CD, passes.
We got these minute notes.
And your calendar?
Calendar.
Oh, the next Recreation Commission meeting is December 17th at 7:00 p.m.
What about Light Up Green Hills?
I want to get the right date. Yeah, I thought it was. It's the 5th.
It's the 5th on Friday.
5th at 6 o'clock. Also, a past council member has run a blood drive on December 9th in Green Hills. Dave Adams has done the Gracie's Give Back Blood Drive. His daughter, Gracie, was the recipient of several units of blood when she had an illness. And for the last several years, her way of giving back is to have a blood drive in her name, and she works it as well as her parents and all family members. And it's from Tuesday, December 9th, 2014, from 2:00 to 8:00 at the Green Hills Community Building. And to schedule an appointment, you can contact David Adams at (513) 379-9784.
Okay, and what I'd like to do, I have some volunteers from council that would take on judging the holiday lights and decorations, and we need to pick a date that would work for some people.
Who's driving?
And I can drive.
Really?
Does he drive in a car?
I don't have a van unless somebody has a van or something.
I think we should get the past mayor to drive us. In his van.
We've got a couple past mayors.
Yeah. Yeah. I'd suggest December 16th, which is a Tuesday night. We usually are doing things on Tuesday nights, so I would suggest that, and I'd be available to do that.
December 16th. All right. Meet up here?
Sure.
And what time? Will be going out after...
Probably after dark, so 7?
6, 7?
It takes about two hours.
Your call. How about your studies?
I know, well, I know, I'm just, that's why I'm not trying to volunteer here.
I have a work meeting that evening, so I cannot.
So you're looking at me?
I am.
Okay. All right, December 16th. 6 o'clock, or?
That sounds good to me.
Okay, all right. Everybody, make sure your lights are on. December the 16th at 6 o'clock. All right, anything else for calendar?
Traffic and safety will not be meeting in December.
All right, and we want to make a motion to go into executive session, and we will have to take some action after that, then?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn to executive session to discuss the potential sale or purchase of real estate.
I need a second, and I'll second it like I did with the first one.
We moved and seconded to go into an executive session to discuss purchase of real estate. Roll call.
Roll call.
Aye.
Dries.
Aye.
Halter.
Aye.
Hermes.
Aye.
Okay, go into executive session, and after that, possibly take some action on what we discussed.
So for Miss... ...CND, authorizing the municipal manager to enter into a contract for purchase and sale of real estate located at 49 Burley Circle. Whereas the municipal manager has been presented with an offer to purchase the property located at 49 Burley Circle, and whereas Council of the Village of Green Hills desires to authorize said sale and purchase. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio. Section 1, that the municipal manager is hereby authorized to enter into a contract for the purchase and sale of property located at 49 Burley Circle to Bertina Palmeri, sorry, substantially in the form of the contract attached here to as Exhibit A incorporated herein by reference. Section 2, that the municipal manager is further authorized to execute any and all necessary documents to fulfill the sale of said property. Section 3, that the finance director is hereby directed to deposit the sale proceeds into the non-voted debt fund. Section 4, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage. I so move.
Second. I'll second that motion.
Any comment? It's been moved and seconded to pass Resolution 2014-40-CD, authorizing municipal manager to enter into a contract for purchase and sale of real estate located at 49 Burley Circle. Roll call.
Dries.
Aye.
Halter.
Aye.
Hermes.
Aye.
Roll call.
Aye.
Resolution 2014-40-CD, passes. Do I have...
Question to adjourn?
Okay, so be it.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.